In the governor's 2020 imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Sturbridge Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.sturbridge.gov/town-administrator/pages/howaccess-virtual-meeting. This meeting, members of the public wish to listen and/or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455. Enter 1428 pound for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public meeting during, uh, to the public, during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the, uh, proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcripts, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. Uh, we'll start the meeting with the approval of the minutes of January 26th. Following that, we have an A and R from Charles B. and Nancy A. McDevitt. At 6:35, we'll have a public hearing for a site plan permit, uh, special permit and site plan for 420 Main Street Porchlight Investments. At 6:50 PM, we have a public hearing to consider the proposal to amend Chapter 27, the Village Gateway District of the zoning bylaws for fast food establishments and some, change some other wording on square footage. At 7:05, we have a public hearing to consider the proposal to amend the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, Chapter 18. Following that, at about 7:15, we have a discussion on the right of first review, uh, refusal of Amber Andretti as the trustee for the Hillman Family Irrevocable Trust of 49 Bushnell Road. After that, we'll have the town planner update and then old and new business adjournment. Uh, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of January 26th?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any, uh, discussion, any changes, corrections?
I have one change on the last page.
Okay, Sue, go ahead.
Charlie, you weren't here, so you didn't motion for your amendment.
Right, I certainly didn't.
But in the same vein, I was there, so I could just take Charlie's spot.
Okay, that's the problem. Yep, they must have.
Any other changes or corrections? If not, do we have a motion then to accept it as amended?
The move.
The move.
Second Jeff. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris? Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
And Alex Dane. Very good. Okay, uh, the next item is the, uh, A and R. Uh, Jean, do you want to go over that?
Yes, uh, Janay will put this up on the screen. If you give us just one second. Okay. So here's the plan. This is for Charles and Nancy McDevitt. And what they're doing with this plan is they're combining Lot 51 and Lot 53, or actually they're marked on here as Lot E and Lot F. And they're combining them to form one lot that will have 31.127 acres of frontage. And it has 137.91 feet of frontage on Shepherd Road and 167.61 on hillside. So since the plan meets the requirements, I would recommend you endorse the plan past the minute.
Very good. Any questions or comments?
Just one question, Charlie.
Sure.
Hold on, Charlie.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Jean, uh, not pertaining to the plan, but well, actually it is. Uh, at the bottom of the plan, it says it's digitally, digitally signed. Is that acceptable? I, I don't really ever recall seeing that, but I know with COVID and all that.
I'm sorry, Russell, where, where are you referring to?
At the bottom, right? Yep, bottom right hand corner, it says it's digitally signed. Is that a very acceptable law?
Yep, so actually the full-size plans and the Mylars have the actual signature on it. It's just the 11 by 7.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, should I then have a motion to endorse the plan?
The move, Sue.
Okay, uh.
Second Sue.
Welcome back, Sue, second Sue. Okay, great, uh, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Okay, uh, let's see. It is 6:35, so, uh, do, does Sue have to read the, uh, public notices? Is it, yeah?
Yeah. Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually on Tuesday, February 9, 2021, at 6:35 PM on the application of Porchlight Investments 3 at 420 Main Street Sturbridge. The applicant requests a special permit and site plan approval pursuant to Chapter 16, 24, and 25 of the zoning bylaw regarding the construction of a parking lot. The applicant requests site plan approval to allow for the conversion of less than one acre of, um, what, commercial tourist? Zone land? Um, zoned lightly wooded property adjacent to the existing 420 Main Street parking lot to an overflow parking lot to support additional businesses planned for the Table 3 Restaurant Group and existing tenants and shared agreements. The applicant is also requesting a special permit to render more than 2,500 square feet impervious in accordance with Chapter 16, Section 16.06(c) of the zoning bylaw. The property location is 429 Main Street and 7 Cedar Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566.
Very good, thank you very much. Jean, do you want to go over where we are on this?
Yes, but could I ask who caller seven is? Could you please identify yourself?
Hey Jean, that could be me, that could be me, Matt Loosick. I, I thought that, um, Peter asked me to, to dial in at 6:35, but if I'm not, if that's not true, I can.
Matt, you're on the wrong Tuesday.
All right, well, here you go.
You're today. You'll be on for the 23rd at 6:35.
Very good. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you very much.
You too, Matt. Thanks.
Bye-bye.
All right. Uh, so this evening, you have before you a request from Porchlight, which, um, you all know as the Table 3 Restaurant Group, for a parking lot expansion on the property known as 420 Main Street and 7 Cedar Street. You'll recall that last year, there was a, approximately an acre of land that was rezoned from suburban residential to commercial tourist to allow for a parking lot expansion to accommodate their really thriving businesses there and also to accommodate a new function room that's actually currently under renovation. So the property is located in the Commercial Tourist District and it's also located in the Groundwater Protection District. So this approval will require a special permit to render 2,500 square feet or more impervious. Um, the existing parking lot is also in the Groundwater Protection District and that already exceeds that threshold. The, excuse me, plan was sent out for staff review. We've received all the comments back and those have been provided to you. Really no concerns were noted. The conservation agent did question if any of the drainage structures would tie into the street and therefore discharge into the Quinne Bog River and be under conservation jurisdiction, and it was determined they will not. Everything will be infiltrated on site. And additionally, the operations manager for the Department of Public Works had a question regarding the proximity of the basin to an existing garage, and that was addressed, um, as well today. No, as I mentioned, no other concerns were noted. Additionally, John Shovlin from Park Corporation was hired to do peer evil, peer, excuse me, I can't speak this evening, a peer review of the storm water management plan. You have his report as well in your packet. You'll note that John did find everything in compliance and he is here to answer any questions you have this evening. Uh, because it's in the Groundwater Protection District, we needed to get comment from Conservation, the Board of Health, and the Board of Selectmen acting as water commissioners. Due to scheduling, uh, requirements, the Board of Selectmen will not be acting on this request until the February 16th meeting. So what I would like is for the applicant to make a presentation for the board and any abutters to ask any questions of myself, the board, the applicant, and Mr. Shovlin. And then at the end of the night, I'll be asking that you continue the public hearing to February 23rd at 6:45 PM. And with that, Peter Engel is, um, now the presenter and he can go over the plans with you.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Um, so as stated, the project is for the, uh, Table 3, or, yeah, group at Cedar Street and Main Street. Um, currently there's a existing parking lot here, couple buildings with several different uses. Um, the idea of the project is to add some overflow parking for those uses as well as a new, um, winter rip room, uh, wedding venue. Um, so with this proposal, we are adding, um, I believe 69 new parking spaces. Um, part of this proposal also includes the addition of one additional handicap ADA accessible space, uh, to meet those requirements. The proposal includes the new parking lot off the north side of the existing parking lot, um, with a stormwater basin, uh, adjacent to 15 Cedar Street and an access walkway down to the existing parking lot for access. Uh, the ADA spot will be, uh, built down in the existing parking lot since the new parking lot wouldn't meet ADA standards with the slope. Um, that parking lot is designed to be between 3 and 6%, uh, which is acceptable for parking, uh, but not ADA compliance. Um, the stormwater system for this proposal involves a grass well, a couple deep stump catch basins, which would then, uh, discharge to a above-ground infiltration basin. Uh, the soils in this vicinity are very sandy, uh, gravelly material, which is, uh, perfect for infiltration. Uh, any overflow from that basin would be directed down to a rip rap, uh, spillway and out into the existing parking lot where there are four catch basins located, uh, leaching catch basins prior to Cedar Street, so there shouldn't be any spillover into Cedar Street. Um, this proposal involves trying to maintain a somewhat, uh, large vegetated strip between the existing parking and the proposed parking to minimize clearing, uh, impervious area, um, and, uh, some landscaping. Um, lighting for the parking lot would be by us some, uh, decorative post lighting, some lights. Is already on the slide. For the existing buildings, um, as well as some landscaping and screening from 15 Cedar Street, um, and additional landscaping to meet the landscaping requirements, uh, of the zoning regs. Um, we did have a couple minor comments from the peer review, um, for additional details and a couple, um, I think discrepancies with the details and one comment from the fire department to increase the turning radius into the new parking lot, uh, which shouldn't be an issue. Um, other than that, I think, uh, we can take some questions if there are any.
Okay. Very good. Uh, John Shovlin, did you have anything you wanted to add or?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members Board. Um, yeah, we, we did the peer review for this for the storm water. Uh, I did have some comments regarding the overall plans. It may have gone maybe somewhere where I didn't need to as far as the storm water, but as far as the storm water design goes, um, you know, as Peter mentioned, it's just a few discrepancies, uh, but the overall design, I think, is the intent and what they're doing for the design is, uh, found to be sound and correct. I think it does meet the, you know, the requirements and they have met stormwater standards, um, and also, you also go ahead and meet, we got the ground water protection, uh, district guidelines. So I think overall, I think the design is, is good. I think it's, uh, you know, meets the requirements of the town and, and the state.
Very, very good, thank you. Sue, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Sue, thank you. Chris?
Uh, no, no questions for me.
Okay, Russ?
A couple things, Charlie.
Sure.
There was one question, I think it was from Nelson, about the handicap parking. Do we require more in the other area or was that looked at?
Yep, uh, I mentioned that because we are over a certain threshold of spaces. I believe the total is in the 190, yeah, 190, uh, so we needed to add one spot, which we accommodate down, um, adjacent to the existing barn, uh, building, building three.
Okay, and the, uh, the other thing that I'm, I'd like to see moved is that stop sign and stop bar moved down towards, down through Cedar Street where the existing parking lot is. Um, I live on Cedar Street and I can't tell you the number of times that cars come pulling out of there and don't even look, don't even stop. Um, I'd like to see that or add another one, probably the way the board feels, but I feel we should put a stop sign and a stop bar at Cedar Street where the existing parking lot exists down to Cedar Street.
Charlie, if I may, I did, um, I apologize, Russell, I didn't include that in my report, but I have spoken to, uh, Mr. Gonya about that and he is in agreement to do that.
Hi, Russ. We're going to resurface the existing parking lot right after this parking lot is installed and hopefully by, um, early June, when we do that, we'll, um, we'll put in the necessary infrastructure to, you know, have a, a stop, um, you know, stop sign at the end of the driveway.
Thank you, Dan.
It's no problem. We can do something temporarily if needed, but, you know, I'd like to do a nice job and pour a good footing and all that for it when we tear it up.
Uh, and the other thing, Jean, um, if we're all in agreement, can, uh, I don't know if it matters to Dan or not, where we don't have to continue as long as the selectmen don't have a problem that it's considered approved, can we do that? Instead of continuing the public hearing for the next meeting?
Um, well, I guess you could, but technically they have 45 days to comment and they haven't exhausted the 45 days yet, so.
Okay.
I mean, I.
I just thought, you know.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I know what you mean. You could probably do it either way. Um, the problem is I did not prepare the order of conditions, um, thinking that it would be continued.
Yeah. And the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen Review will really be, in their role as water, uh, you know, commissioners for the, uh, water areas, so we should really get their input on that, I think. So if that'd be fine, we can continue. All right. Uh, Jeff?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks. I have no questions. Thanks, Jeff. Mike?
Uh, no questions.
Dane?
Yeah, I just have a couple of small comments. Up on the top, where the parking space is being added, um, if I'm in all, if I park head in all the way on the left on the top there and I try to back out, I don't have anywhere to turn towards the left so I can orient my car towards the exit. I'm familiar with most of these dead-end parking spaces having a, a three to five-foot little spot for the butt of my car to back into. Um, is that possible to add onto the ends of both of these with the grading challenges that you have on the site?
Um, yeah, we can look at it. Um, you know, we do have 24-foot aisle width, so, um, like at the far right, I think it would be, you know, fine to just back straight up and then do a, a swing turn there. Um, on the left side, I can see what you mean. Um, there is a 24-foot aisle, but we can look at doing a small bump out there to, to increase that turning radius.
Thank you. Um, similar to the other stop bar comments, I noticed two other spots that Mike wants them. One of them is when you're entering the new parking and you're coming up that slope, just like you have the stop bar when you're leaving that parking aisle. Um, if you're turning left into the new bay of parking and somebody's coming towards that, I mean, you have a, an uncontrolled tee, so another stop bar wouldn't hurt there. And similarly down where the existing building is, you have a 24-foot road coming up to a throughway, an uncontrolled tee. Um, I don't know if there's an opportunity for a stop bar and a stop sign in that area as well.
The, the one that you mentioned in the new parking lot, um, that shouldn't be a problem. Uh, the one in the existing parking lot, um, we could look at a stop bar, I don't know if a sign would work there. I believe that, that sidewalk there is.
I agree, there's a lot of hardscape in that area.
Yeah, um, we could look at adding it in that, in that landscape area, um, but.
You know, stop bar would help just to indicate that they're entering, somebody else is right of.
Yep, no, I agree.
In that same, in that same vicinity, um, you have a nice, um, set of stairs coming down and a, a hatched, I think, five-foot wide little section, um, but then the way to get to the building, if we could extend that, um, crosswalk to connect the, that same hardscape radius towards that new striped five foot.
Sure.
Um, I also thought it was really interesting, the proposed foot bridges over the swale, um, a great use of a tight space, um, but I don't think I saw a detail of that foot bridge. Can you describe what you're thinking for that?
Sure, so that was, uh, actually one of Peter's comments as well, uh, so we'll have to develop that, um, detail. Um, basically either it would be a foot bridge, uh, probably, you know, pressure-treated lumber, something to that effect, um, spanned over that swale, or, um, you know, the swale's only two feet wide by one foot deep, so if they wanted to just put a, uh, a six-inch pipe or two six-inch pipes and then, and, and earth and, uh, walkway, that would be fine too. I'll have to, uh, talk to Dan about that, which way he wants to go.
Yeah, doing that second option, um, might be duplicative of the check dams you already have in the swale, but like maybe you could reuse them for both, um, depending on what John's review thinks. Um, my last comment on the site plan is up at the front, those seven spaces, right when you come in, then there's like an unstriped, uncontrolled area with some bollards and like a utility access way. Um, would you consider putting a striped triangle in that area just to indicate that's the end of the designated parking areas?
Yeah, we can add striping that, yep.
Excellent. Two minor comments on the grading plan. Um, I guess just the one, the outlet control structure, did you intend it to have a stump or should the outlet be at the bottom?
Um, it doesn't necessarily need a stump. Um, the stump, I mean, just helps with additional, uh, sediment removal before sending it down to, uh, back towards the driveway in those catch basins if it does overflow there. Um, so that's, cleaned out.
That makes sense, as it comes out of the settling basin. Okay, that makes sense. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Dane.
Okay, and I'm all set.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Charlie, I don't know if you would know this answer or Jean. Um, since the water is not going into our town system, does it have to go to the Board of Selectmen as water commissioner?
Yeah, so actually, so what it has to go to the Board of Selectmen for is it's rendering 2,500 square feet or greater impervious in the groundwater protection district. So it goes to them acting as water commissioners and it's for protection of the drinking water supply, basically, groundwater that feeds drinking water supplies.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Anything else?
We'll check to see if there's any abutters on the line.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there anyone on the line that has comments for the public hearing for 420 Main Street?
No, there's nobody on the line.
Okay, very good then. Could we have a motion then to continue the, uh, public hearing till February 23rd? Do you have a time for that, Jean?
Yeah, 6:45 PM.
The move, Russell.
Okay, Russ, thanks. Second, Chris. Okay, Chris, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, John Shovlin.
Good, thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Hi, John. Nice to have you.
Say no.
Thanks, guys, thank you.
Okay, next we have the public hearing to consider the proposal to amend Chapter 27, the Village Gateway District. Sue, do you want to read the public hearing on that?
Yes. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Sturbridge Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually on Tuesday, February 9, 2021, at 6:50 PM to consider amendments to the town zoning bylaw as petitioned by the Planning Board. The proposed amendment would amend the, uh, Chapter 27, Village Gateway District, Section 27.4, uh, .04b by inserting number seven. Fast food establishment also proposed is an amendment to the definition of fast casual found in Chapter 2. Be deleting the language, that is at least 4,000 square feet in area.
Very good, thank you. Jean, do you want to go over this?
Yes. So as you'll recall, the board met with, uh, Mr. Patel, Mr. Doherty, and Mr. Jacobs, oh, I think a few months, about more than a few months back now, to discuss, um, the issues of desiring to have a fast, the ability to have a fast food restaurant in the Village Gateway District while maintaining the same architectural and design standards. And we talked an awful lot about changes in operational needs due to COVID and the fact that we believe and research says that this will be a kind of our new normal for a while. People will be using smaller footprints and definitely wanting the use of drive-through windows and pickup windows to accommodate their patrons. So after some research, the board did decide to move forward as the petitioner. And this change, if approved at town meeting, would allow for a fast food restaurant to be allowed in the Village Gateway District. And then also proposed is deleting the minimum square footage of 4,000 feet for fast casual restaurants. And this will also give a little bit more flexibility. I think what we found, um, in looking at the models that some franchises are using now, 4,000 square feet is pretty large compared to, um, the space that they actually need. So it's all about consolidating operations, convenience to the consumer, and touch-free if possible, contactless, I would say. So, um, since all the architectural standards would stay in place, I would support this request. And Mr. Patel and Mr. Doherty are both here if the board has any questions or other things that we haven't discussed yet.
Okay, great. Um, Sue, do you have any questions on this?
No, I do not. No, I do not.
Okay. Okay. Chris?
Chris?
Uh, no, I have no questions. Russ?
Russ?
Oh, no, no questions, Charlie.
No questions, Charlie.
Yep.
No questions.
Okay, Jeff, thanks. Mike?
Uh, no questions, Charlie.
Thanks. Dane?
None.
Okay. And I have no questions. I think really, Jean, this is a good solution to the whole thing. I think it really updates the, uh, you know, the bylaw and, and makes it, uh, uh, very workable under today's conditions. Uh, so could I have a motion then to, uh, close the public hearing?
Sorry?
Oh, I have to check the public.
I was just going to suggest that. Check, see if anybody called in.
Is there anyone on the line who has any comments regarding the public hearing for proposed zoning amendments to the Village Gateway District?
There's no one on the line.
Okay. So could we have a motion then to close the public hearing?
Who's the move?
Full move. Second, Russell.
Okay. Next, Russell. Great. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Us?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. So then I think the proper motion, Jean, would be to, um, forward this to the Board of Selectmen and, and ask them to place it on the annual town meeting warrant. You have the motion there?
Yes. So the appropriate motion would be to support the amendments to Chapter two definitions in Chapter twenty-seven, Section twenty-seven, point oh four B as drafted, and to provide the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and ask that these proposed changes be placed on the annual town meeting warrant.
Very good. Do I have a motion?
No moves, Sue.
No motion. Second? Second, Jeff. Okay, Jeff, thank you. Um, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Us?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Okay. And thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you very much, guys.
Take care.
Bye.
Okay, from my clock here, we have about, uh, two minutes, I think, before the next one. I don't know if you have anything on the, uh, update, on your town report you want to go over on yet. Landers report, Jean?
Um, let me see. I think it's that, a February twenty-third Planning Board meeting. We'll have the continuation of the public hearing for Fifth Hill East, and that's at six thirty-five. And the reason that, um, I indicated you could put the continuation for four twenty Main Street at six forty-five is because the Conservation Commission has, will be unable to complete their review because of the snow cover. So it doesn't make sense for the Planning Board to complete its review and approve a plan that may ultimately change after review by the Conservation Commission. So in speaking with the engineer and Matt Sossick, the owner of the property, we determined it would be most prudent to ask the Planning Board to grant an extension of time, and actually they will grant to the board an extension of time to act because for the definitive subdivision plan, we only have ninety days start to finish. So as you recall, the deadline will be March ninth. So this will give them time to work on the plans to widen out roadway, um, update the stormwater management plan and the calculations, and hopefully by then the snow will melt and the Conservation Commission can get out there. So by the, by the next, by that meeting of the twenty-third, we'll have a better handle on what we might be recommending for a date.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And according to my little, uh, clock here on my computer, it says it's seven oh five. So Sue, do you want to read the public hearing notice for the next, the proposal to amend the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, Chapter eighteen?
Yes. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Sturbridge Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually on Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand twenty-one at seven oh five P M. To consider amendments to the town's zoning bylaw as petitioned by the planning board. The propose, the proposed are amendments of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, Chapter eighteen. The amendments eliminate the renewal process, eliminate the maximum square footage requirement, and instead require that the unit be subordinate to the principal dwelling, and also contain provisions for an accessory dwelling unit located within accessory structure.
Very good. Thank you very much. Jean, do you want to go over this and fill us in with what's going on here?
Well, basically, the public hearing notice says it all. As you recall, we've recently completed our housing production plan. And going through that process, we heard from an awful lot of people during that process and actually even before that process that our accessory dwelling unit bylaw is basically, um, not very friendly to people that actually needed to create a unit. For example, the square footage requirements were so small that if you needed a handicap accessible unit, it was nearly impossible to get the space that you needed. Also, if, say you had a barn on your property and you wanted to create a unit in there for your mother or father or daughter, you could not do it because the bylaw said it had to be attached to the home. So that is just, um, you know, creating extra expense where maybe some extra expense does not need exist. If you had the structure there, um, you, this bylaw would allow you to convert it. And, um, it does say that it has to be in keeping with the character of the property. And also there was an annual review process that was pretty onerous considering you've just made thousands of dollars of investment creating a unit and then now you're coming back to renew that special permit in a year. And, you know, when we first put in the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, it was done by citizen petition. It was very controversial. I think in this day and age, it's more than normal. And people more and more need to have their extended families live with them or maybe even need to have a small unit that they can rent to help them pay their taxes so that they can age in place and stay in their home. So I think these amendments, kind of check a lot of those boxes, are very consistent with the housing production plan. And also, um, some recent literature, even, um, A R P, for example, just put out a nice booklet on towns being able to create friendlier bylaws to allow accessory dwelling units. And a lot of the things we're doing with this change, if it passes, are exactly what they're recommending. Eliminating the square footage cap, giving more flexibility on where the units can be. And, um, you know, the renewal process is probably just a little silly when it was adopted, but it was a long time ago. Things changed. So I'm definitely in support of this bylaw update. I think it's, uh, long overdue. And that's all I have.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. Sue, do you have any questions or comments on it?
No question.
Chris?
No questions.
Okay, Chris, thanks. Russ?
Nope, no questions.
Okay, Jeff?
Jean, would, would a ti- you know, this, this whole tiny house or tiny home, um, revolution over the last five years, would that qualify under, under this A D U bylaw?
Well, if you wanted to put something in an accessory structure, I guess theoretically it could, but this really isn't meant to take place of a, a tiny home bylaw. There are a lot of different, um, standards that you would put in. And, um, right now for a dwelling unit, a regular standalone, single, say, for example, single family dwelling, our minimum square footage is seven hundred and fifty square feet. So if tiny homes were something the board wanted to look at in the future, I think it would be, um, a much different bylaw than this. But yes, you could probably build a small cottage that might fall under the tiny home category on your property for, you know, an in-law to use or something like that under this bylaw. We've had, heard them called at the, um, housing forum, somebody called them granny pods. There's actually a company that will rent kind of a mobile unit and they bring it to your home so that you, you fit while you need it, and then if you don't need it, it can go away. So I guess similar to that, Jeff.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, is it, it, my question, would something like one of these granny pods, that's a mobile, you know, um, a, a mobile essentially home, but it's a, it's a, you know, it, it would fall under the definition of a tiny home as we generally understand it, would that fall under this bylaw?
It's, well, it would fall under it insofar as it's an, an accessory dwelling unit in an accessory structure on the same property as the primary residence.
But the minimum size would be seven hundred and fifty square feet. Okay, all right. Is that correct?
No, not necessarily. We've eliminated the square footage as I was referring to if you were building a single family home, the minimum square footage is seven hundred and fifty.
Okay. Jeff, does that answer your question?
I mean, my concerns would, would, so, I mean, if, if one of these, um, tiny homes, and I understand that there would be probably, essentially, we should look at, at some point, a separate, um, bylaw for tiny homes, but, you know, the, the mobile tiny home that would have, you know, potentially, you know, your, your typical, uh, extension cord for electricity and, and, and who knows what kind of plumbing that would, it would require. I mean, you know, that's my concern, is I'm trying to differentiate between that and this bylaw.
Yeah, no, it, it would have to meet all of the state and local building.
Okay, all right. That makes, that makes me feel more comfortable. All right.
Okay. I'm sorry for following you with that.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have public comment.
Uh, no questions, though.
Uh, Dane?
No.
And I have no other questions. Do we want to, see if anyone is calling in?
Yep. Janay, you can check the phone, and actually, we just received a written comment through the public comment. And it says that, um, this is from Luke Bardley of fifty-two Streeter Road. And his comment is accessory dwelling unit bylaw needs to include a detached living structure for aging families, aging parents that need to be close to family. So, uh, Luke, if you're still watching, this bylaw as proposed does accomplish that.
I don't know, I don't know if you can hear me, but I am listening. Thank you.
Very good. Yes, we can. Thank you. Okay, any other callers?
Is there anyone on the line who has comments on the public hearing for the accessory dwelling unit zoning amendments?
Okay, hearing done. I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
No moves. Sue?
Sue, second, somebody?
Second, Chris.
Okay, Chris, thank you. Uh, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Dane? Yeah, okay, Dane. And I vote yes. Very good. So then we'll have a similar motion then to, uh, sponsor this and ask the Board of Selectmen to, uh, place it on the annual town meeting, Jean?
Yes. The appropriate motion would be to support the amendment, Chapter eighteen, accessory dwelling units as drafted, and to provide the recommendations to the Board of Selectmen and ask that these proposed changes be placed on the annual town meeting warrant.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
No moves.
Sue, thank you. Second? Um, second, somebody?
Yes.
I'll second that. Okay, Mike, good. Um, Sue, how do you vote? Yes. Chris?
Yes.
Us?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Thank you. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, recommendation on the town's right of first refusal um, for, um, some land at forty-nine, uh, Bushnell Road. Jean, do you want to go over that?
Yes. So this is property that's owned by the Hillman Family Irrevocable Trust, and they have a purchase and sale agreement to sell forty-nine Bushnell Road. And the property does contain a single family home. You have the bona fide offer to purchase in your packet. The intent of the prospective purchasers is to continue to use this property as a private residence. The property is currently in chapter land and therefore the town has the first right of re- refusal. However, I would recommend that we send correspondence to the town administrator indicating the board does not recommend that the town exercise its first right of refusal.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on that? Is everyone all right with that?
All set.
Okay. Okay, so do we have a motion then to, uh?
Motion to accept what Jean just stated for, to bring forward to the Board of Selectmen? Yes.
Second, Russell.
Yeah, second motion.
Very good. Okay, um, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Okay, um, Jean, do you want to continue on, on your, uh, town plan or update?
I have one more item, Charlie, is the floodplain bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
On, on the, uh, agenda item. And this is, so the, uh, National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator and Deputy Hazard Mitigation Officer for the Department of Conservation and Recreation Flood Hazard Management Program has been in the process of reviewing the floodplain bylaws for communities in Massachusetts. And they're requiring that the towns update their bylaws to make them more current. What they found is that they've just, you know, some, in some cases, these were adopted many years ago and have had some updates that are just not quite current. So in your packet, you have the changes that she is recommending we make to the bylaw at our earliest available time, which would be the annual town meeting. So I think they're pretty straightforward, brings everything, um, up to current standards, updates the way we talk about which map panels and things are used. And I would like to ask the board to vote to be the petitioner for these proposed zoning amendments so that I can forward this to the Board of Selectmen to begin the process because we are, time is getting close on amendments for the annual town meeting.
Okay, very good. Does anyone have any questions on this, uh, floodplain Obolay District, these changes? If, if not, do we have a motion then, as Jean requests, to sponsor this and send it forward to the Board of Selectmen for their process to move forward?
So move, Jeff.
So move.
Thank you.
Second, Sue.
Second, Sue. Okay, great. Um, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Us?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Dane?
Yes.
Very good. And I vote yes. Very good. And anything else on your update, your next meeting dates or anything? You all set?
All set. Just, uh, the, the only other item we'll have on the twenty-third is the ninety Charleston Road cold storage facility that you met with them previously. Um, so that will be on that evening as well.
Very good. Well, thank you. Okay, next we have old and new business. Sue, do you have any old or new business?
No, I do not.
Okay. Um, Chris?
Nope, I am good too. All right, great. Russ? All set, thank you.
Hey, Jeff?
I'm all set as well.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
None.
All right, Dane?
I just wanted to take a minute in the public meeting to thank Janay for the new file organization system on the website. I think it's very good. We got an email about that earlier this week, and, um, I think it's a good asset for the town. Thank you for your efforts.
I agree. It's really great. We appreciate that. Thank you.
For remembering that.
Yeah. Okay, and I have nothing else, uh, for old and new. Do we have a motion then to adjourn?
No moves, Sue.
Second, Russ, okay. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Us?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Have a good night.
Night. Good night.